Listen, you can hear it. Different voices, a whole new spirit. Ooh, people, working together. From every walk of life, making changes for the better. We've come so far, look where we are. It's a whole new world.
Our first round of candidates. Remind everyone of the rules. Each candidate is drawing their name from a hat to determine their order. We're going to go by topic, by council district, and then the mayor or candidates. Each candidate has three minutes to stand up and tell the group a little bit about themselves and what they want to do if they're elected. If you want any additional information on the candidates, I think most of them have literature over at this table that you can take. And I think when they're done, I think most of them will probably hand it around for a little bit of time before I chat with them. For the candidates, Mike Beyond, who's sitting right down here, will wave at you in 30 seconds to let you know when time's up. If he turns all the way up, he's going to jump up and wave his arms, and then doesn't work off the ground. Anyway, it should be a good three minutes. To get things started, we're going to start with District One. And the first person we're going to hear from is Larry Gumbel.
First off, I just read the email. I thought it was the 30 minutes, so I'm fairly available. I mean, I don't like to talk. I want to thank Chamber for inviting all of us here as well, knowing we could do this. What we have here today are many business owners, those who manage business, and those that are laborers. So we have the entire Congress group, if you will, here today. What that tells me is we all understand how important business is. Now, with that said, I've been a business owner for the better part of a quarter century. I've had businesses that deal in product, and did businesses that deal in service, and businesses that deal in both product and service. And I think the most important thing we can be at as a business community is council members, legislators on any level, who actually understand business. And not understand it necessarily by asserting, but by doing. I understand that when we consider a 2% tax increase, the answer is says $2 up 100, $20 up 1,000, 2%, no big deal. I understand over the last 15 years that product margins have shrunk to under 30% both profit margin. And if somebody doesn't understand both profit margin, they can't understand business. I understand that the net income revenue has shrunk below 8%. In fact, most people make 8% of what you would call take home profit. Think they're doing pretty good in today's world. So if you're at 6% and you pass a tax, for instance, for 2%, it's not 2 against 100, it's 2 against that 6% profit. It's 30, it's 2% of the take home for that small business owner, for the business that you are managing. And with that comes a tightening of the balance, which means it affects labor. So in my opinion, you want to make sure you actually have a perspective that truly, truly understand Congress. Now, I have a unique take on it, because while I've been a business owner for the better part of these five years, I've also been a member of labor. I am still currently a Teamster in good standing on withdraw. Currently, what I have is an independent insurance agency, so I'm back to being a business owner. I understand all sides. With that said, I'm not going to take the full three minutes unless I have to. I'm assuming 30. My name, for those that don't know me, is Larry Gumbel. I live in District One. My friend is Terrence Cattrall. He lives in District One. When he speaks, I will be sitting down with him, and if you listen to him as a candidate, I will be listening to him as a constituent. Because that's what it's about. Talking with constituents who are maybe private residents or business owners. What can business do for us? I'll tell you what most business owners tell me. Please get out of the way. Please don't throw any obstacles, and we'll let you know where we can turn around. And that's my intention. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Larry. Our next candidate from District One is Terry Cattrall.
My name's Terry Cattrall. I'm running for council member of District One. I want to tell you about how I originally got involved in this. How I originally got involved in this. I was answering a call on the Plainfield Enterprise in 2010 for library board members in Plainfield. So my district is mostly Plainfield Township. And I've lived there for a number of years, and I've tried to be involved with my community at a variety of different levels. My literature anyhow gives a good explanation of some of the things I've done. You can also go to terrycattrall.com to see some of the other community engagements that I've had over my time as a lifelong Joliet resident. So I answered a call on the Plainfield Enterprise for the Library Board. And through that process, I gained what I call civic pride. I started to attend the Village Trustee Board meetings, and that is where I originally got the idea that as a lifelong resident of Joliet, as a person who was educated and was able to succeed in a variety of different areas, I had certain particular skills, especially in management, collaboration, teamwork, strategic planning, and budgeting, that I could offer my community. And the city council was how I chose to serve. After watching the meetings online and reading and doing my homework, I think that I have a particular value that I can give to my community that is definitely something that's forward-looking as Joliet definitely needs a new vision for the future. And that is what my candidacy represents, is working together with people to come up with new ideas for the future of the city, starting with District One. My interest for my district involves increased commercial development. At one of our last forums, a question was posed of how we can get young people more motivated to be active and beneficial members of society. And one way we can do that is to increase the commercial development that we have. District One being close to the mall and the Route 59 corridor is a pride location for that. There are some areas that I think as a council member, I would be a great ambassador for the city of Joliet with new developers who are looking to invest in our city. So my platform is starting from that, community policing, infrastructure projects, and also getting to learn, to learn about the city and know more people who are involved. And I appreciate you giving me the time to talk to you today, and I look forward to getting to know you more, and so you can see what I might be able to do for the city and for District One. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Larry. I ask the District Two candidates, please step up to the stage. The District Two candidates are Patrick Munder, Roger Powell, and Brett Gould. And Mr. Munder shows the number ones, and he'll be the first to speak, Mr.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thanks, Chamber, for putting us on. Marwana Sue Boymoffin and her staff, we appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. As mentioned, my name's Pat Lyric, running for District Two. District Two happens to be an open seat at this time. The current candidate, the current councilperson is running for mayor. For 65 years, I sat in the office of chair, been at these meetings, watched others, had thoughts on how I would maybe do it if I ran. And finally, felt that I have enough time. Been a self-employed businessperson here in Joliet for about 43 years. I live in District Two all my life. Still live in District Two. I have two children, nine grandchildren, most of which are still living in District Two. I'm a local product educator, education-wise, at the great schools here, Joliet Catholic High and University of Norrigan. Time is something that is needed. Time is something that we all cherish, and we run short of. I think business-wise now, I understand time management, and I can put the time in that would be needed to be the representative in District Two. As a businessperson, I understand needs and wants. We all want a lot of things. We only need some of them, and we only can afford less than some of them. Budget gets talked about at every one of the meetings. We all know about 75% of the city budget goes to wages and benefits. So the budget is a big number, but it's rather small in what we can really change. As you all know, we're a city manager, former governor. We have a manager, Jim Hye. We have heads of department, who I'm assuming are all very well-awed, but they wouldn't have been moved up to that position. I'm not sure if we're taking advantage of these individuals and having more of that team concept. There's always going to be issues. We need to get everyone around the table. We need everybody to buy into the system so we can move ahead and solve the problems. Every day, we have problems, whether it's in your business, your home, your personal life. We have to go out. I think the city council needs to work together with the committee heads and with the city manager. I'd like to thank you for your time. I've gotten my sign, and my three minutes went a lot faster than I thought they would go.
Thank you, Pat. Our next candidate is Roger Powell.
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you, King, Chair, and me. Now, I'm going to be very, I have been mayor for 40 years, and the only person that controls a broad problem is Mr. Cherry. Let's get that right. I have two adult children, Cherry, I mean Terry, and Roger, and I think you know about Roger, Roger. And what I'd like to do, I'm also a forty to the House of Representatives. And one of my responsibilities is making sure to oversee the budget, making sure the money goes where it's supposed to go. Because Roger Powell does not want to be a jet. Therefore, I have to make sure the money goes where it goes. Number two, I have to make sure that things in the House of Representatives are fixed, and that allows me to be collaborative with people. I've learned the concept of working as a team through basketball. And for 35 years, I had the opportunity to be a trainer for churches. So therefore, it gives me a lot of experience dealing with money. Because you, as a business owner, understand that what grows better, what grows worse, is money. And being a forty and overseeing, you've got to make sure everything goes right. Another thing I'd like to say, I like to work with the city because the city's been good to me. I grew up here, right around the Stock Street, and it's been very good to me. And I'm tired now, and I'm trying to teach me to get back to the city of Joliet. And what I can give back is called collaboration, working together. I'm not coming here because, you know, I feel I can make, make, make change, but we all work together, living by living, because we can make change. Now, one of the things I want to make sure is that we, as a people, come together and work, the business community and government work together hand in hand. And I would like to thank the people, I'm not going to take a premise. I'd like to thank you for everything they've done, and you have a blessed day, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Our next candidate is Brett Gould.
Thank you, Howard. I'd like to thank the Joliet area Chamber of Commerce and Labor for being here today, listen to us, and allow us to share why we're running for Joliet City Council. I believe I have the experience and the record to make Joliet a safer and better community. My experiences, my wife and I too are small business owners. My wife is the CEO, president, she operates the business, and I'm the vice president. It's kind of like at home, she makes all the decisions, and I have a title. I think that's why I get to run for office, so I get to make a decision sometime in another way. I have experience as a school administrator, I'm a former dean, high school football coach, wrestling coach, and principal of Blackwell Township High School. I'm a member of Fairmont Community Partnership, the Joliet Junior College Foundation, which raises money for scholarships so schools can continue their education after high school. And most of you know me, I've served 12 years in the Joliet Park District as a boarder commissioner, and almost 12 years I was elected for four consecutive terms as president of the board. I can believe I have a record of making Joliet and the Joliet Park District a better place. As a school administrator, I work with unions, teachers, coaches, I raise parents, students, you name it. I've had the experience throughout being a dean, high school football coach, a principal, of dealing and having to work with many people to get things done and to run an effective organization. On the Joliet Park District, over the last 12 years, we've done numerous wonderful things. I'm very proud of the work the Joliet Park District has done and what it's meant to this community. We have a balanced budget. In this economic times, we're running a government with a balanced budget, and at the same time, we're doing a lot of great things. We've worked with businesses, ATI, present St. Joe Medical Center, University of St. Francis, the Four Partnerships, so the tax base can stay low, where those partners help allow us to provide services. I voted to build the Inwood Athletic Club. I voted to build soccer fields. I voted for stadium renovations. I voted to put a lot of people to work and to make things better for Joliet. I also voted and pushed through that the Joliet Park District bought 100 acres of land out west on Grove Road. We're not using it now, but someday, kids and families will be using that 100 acres again, making Joliet a better place to live and work and raise a family. The Joliet Park District employs 1,100 people, and then again, the time, we have 1,100 W2s, so we put a lot of people to work, and we're a big organization. The referendum, which many of you on the Chamber Council supported, we passed a referendum in this time for $1.5 million, that will put more people to work and even make Joliet a better place. That referendum, more than the $19.5 million, because that's nice, but more than the $19.5 million was a trust in the government we have. So I believe I have the record and the experience. I'm committed to make Joliet a better place. Thank you for having me here today. I'm recording.
Next, we'll hear from the District Three candidates, Ray Vaughn Otis and John Grohl.
Good afternoon. My name is Ray Paul Pettis. I'm a candidate for the city council in Norrigan District. And in our drawing over here, I was kind of sort of puzzled, I pulled out number two without speaking first, so I'm still trying to figure that one out. I've been an accountant for 20-plus years. I have my own accounting firm, and the DA Finance. So I think I have requisite understanding and ability to deal with financial issues that face the city of Joliet. And we all have our views on how best to solve some of the issues that are confronting the city, or will confront the city. But in my walking around the district, fundamental issue that the voters seem to have is that they want someone who's a proactive city council member. Whatever the problems are, again, we're all qualified, intelligent individuals, and we have our own perspective on which direction the city should go. But I think the most fundamental reason for me, for running for this particular office, is to be able to interact with citizens, to see what their views are, what their feelings are, what their concerns are. Because that's who we represent, isn't it? It's not enough to put up a yard sign every four years and ask for a person's vote. We need to be out there with those people, out from the Kendall County region of the district. And those people feel anguished out there in the far west region. So it's to be proactive, involve members, involve the citizens of the district that, if unfortunate to be elected, will represent. Now, we all have our differences, as I said before, on how best to approach it. I'm a firm believer that certain things are best left to the private sector to solve and deal with. And certain things, such as offering, you know, state-of-the-art solid core services, is a responsibility of city government. But again, my main endeavor is to represent effectively the people of the district and to be out there during the four-year term, interacting with them, seeking out their opinions, and trying to find out what their concerns are each and every day of the four-year term. Again, my name is Ray Paul Pettis, and I thank you for having us here today. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ray. Next, we'll hear from John Grohl.
Thank you, Howard. Thank you, Chamber, for allowing us to speak here. You know, this is actually the most purest form of government, is basically to get together and to share our views in front of an audience like this, and I certainly do appreciate the opportunity. You know, I've been a little self-conscious when I speak in public, especially since last week. Last weekend, I was out walking, and I went up to a door, and a gentleman opened the door. He's probably in his early 70s. And I introduced myself, I said, "My name is John Grohl. I'm a Joliet City Council..." He goes, "Hey." Before I get to the room, he goes, "You're on the city council, aren't you?" He goes, "I watch you on TV." He goes, "Man, you're a lot heavier on TV than you are." So I get a little self-assured, okay? Again, my name is John Grohl. Just to give you a little bit of background about myself, I've actually lived in Joliet my entire life. It's the only home that I've ever lived in. And I went to Joliet grade schools, went to Joliet high schools, went to Lewis University, graduated there in 1985 with my accounting degree, and I've been practicing CPA for about 28 years. I'm a member of the Illinois CPA Society and the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. As far as my family, I've been married to my wife Renee for 26 years, who's also a lifetime resident of Joliet, and we are very involved in our community. I have two children. My son, John, actually graduated from the University of Iowa this past May. He's currently finishing up grad school and is studying for his CPA exam right now. And my daughter, Haley, is a junior at the University of Missouri, and she's in their college of nursing out there, so we're both very proud of our children. But as I mentioned before, my wife and I are very involved in our community. She's involved in an organization called Pumps, helping you get started. Some of you, I see some faces out there that I know are involved in that organization as well. They do a lot of good work for some of the privileged people. And I myself am a Joliet Catholic, a Catholic board of directors, and I serve on the administration commission for the St. Ray's people. Just a little bit about some things that have been going on in the city. You know, four years ago, when I was elected, we were in pretty poor shape, to be honest. And the first thing we did is we took a look at the budget, and for the last four years, 2012, 2013, '14, and '15, we had a balanced budget. And we're pretty proud of that. It was a collective effort, collective effort, not only by the council, the mayor, but also by labor, and by the people that live in the city of Joliet and our county as well. So there was a lot of cuts that took place, and I'm very proud we've been part of that. And in 2015, we advanced the balance, we had a balanced budget as well. And we don't agree on a whole lot of things at the Joliet City Council, but we agreed on that 2015 budget. But anyway, a lot of positive things have been going on. Over the last four years, we've added about $0.5 billion worth of economic development in the city of Joliet. We created 9,000 jobs, and we've cut our employment rate in half just in four years. And you're going to hear a lot of discussions today about what's happening in the city, but really, take a look at those facts, okay? And let's look at the private sector. What they have to say, standard and course, basically, we have a double A minus lottery. That's because we have a balanced budget, we have a low debt rate. That's an investment grade rate. So again, I'm getting the high sign here as I go. Thank you for allowing us to speak. Again, thank you, Chamber.
Thank you, Ray and John. Next, we'll hear from our District Four candidates, James Foster, Angel Guzman, and Betty Gadd.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is James Foster. I'm running for the Joliet City Council. And first of all, I'd like to thank you all for coming out today, and the Chamber for putting on this grid again. I feel it's very important for the residents, and especially the business district of Joliet, to be well-informed on who the candidates that are seeking election. I'm also proud to say that I am a new member of the Chamber, recently joined, and I'm looking forward to all of the benefits that the Chamber has to offer. A little bit more about myself, I am a second-generation lifelong resident of District Four. District Four is the only place that I've ever lived. My parents moved there in 1964, raised me, and here I am today. I currently stand in this district. I am a union electrical contractor, signature of the three locals, Local 176, Local 134 in Chicago, and 701 in DuPage County. My background and education is I am a 1988 graduate of Joliet Catholic and a 1984 graduate of the Cathedral of St. Raymond's. A little bit more about my business, and I've heard everyone here today talk about business and speak about teamwork, and it's very important when it comes to getting things done. I'm a firm believer that if you are going to be a council member, you should have some type of expertise and experience in managing money. And I can tell you that in my business, one of the things that I have grown to love and do well is managing money, balancing budgets, setting forth goals and getting them accomplished. And most important is keeping a watchful eye out for unforeseen conditions. Because we all know, as being business owners, it's that uh-oh situation that costs us a little bit more money, drops the cost up, and takes away from our profit. So I feel as though my construction-related experience on the city council can keep a watchful eye out for situations like that. And just for example, maybe the transportation center that's $2.3 million over budget, or the water treatment plant that's over budget. I'm also, my mom was a 45-year school teacher in Joliet Public Schools. My father was a carpenter, so hard work and education is very important to me. I am also, like I say, a resident of the Forest Park area. I'm a real estate stakeholder in the Forest Park area. I develop homes in that area, and I have rental properties. Also, I was a 12-year vice president of a daycare center. So having my own business, taking care of the kids, keeping a roof over your head, are things that are important to me. I look forward to your input, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, James. Our next candidate is Angel Guzman.
Good afternoon. My name is Angel Guzman. I'm a candidate for Joliet City Council of District Four. Excuse me if my voice is a little hoarse. I have a feeling too, I just ran back there. I was born and raised in the city of Joliet, and one thing that motivates me to run for Joliet City Council is I feel that District Four is ripe for development. We have a lot of empty land on Grove Road, we have patches of available land on Cal Street. We have all this land available in the city of Joliet, and I feel that us being the largest city in Gold County, we're ripe for development. And something that we can do better in order to attract job creators is market our city better. We have access on Highway 5, on Highway 80, many state routes. We have Metro, we have Amtrak. I have background in marketing, and one thing I like to do is I like to reach out to job creators, large and small, and let them know my Joliet voice for that. And another thing to let job creators know that we're serious about welcoming them into District Four, we need to properly maintain our infrastructure. There are sections in our neighborhoods that don't even have sidewalks. Now, if you are a businessman or businesswoman, and you're cruising around District Four, and you notice Craker Avenue, a dirt road, you're not really going to want to invest in that area. So I think it's important that we maintain our street sidewalks and alleys, make sure our streets are well-lit. Also, crime, we do have, we have a crime problem in District Four, so I feel that's important that our police department is fully staffed, and we do all these things to attract job creators. And that's something I like to do, my background in marketing, reach out to job creators. Thank you so much, and have a great day.
Thank you, Angel. Our next candidate is Betty Gadd.
Good afternoon, and thank the Chamber for having this opportunity for me to come before you and tell you who I am and why I got to the point where I am right now. Again, my name is Betty Gadd, and I am currently the executive director of the Forest Park Community Center. For over the past three years, I have been working within the community because my passion is to improve the quality of life for all residents. And so we're stepping up and working from the outside with making sure that families are sustainable, that people have the resources and the tools that they need to become successful. I was pushing from the outside. The mayor gave me a unique opportunity, and it took a lot of courage on his part to appoint me to a vacancy. And for the last eight months, I have been seated at the table. I feel very honored about that because now I have the opportunity to bring the voice of the people in District Four to the table. I believe that District Four's voice at a place right now where we are, we can be like a phoenix rising up from the ashes. Because it's a phoenix rising up from the ashes, because it's going to take good leadership, great fiscal responsibility, and good community involvement to make that happen. And so, working together and making sure that we leverage our resources and making sure that we build capacity will make us stronger in District 4. Safer neighborhoods is key. Any business will not be attracted if the neighborhoods are not safe, residents won't even participate in business. So that's one of my key focuses, to have safer neighborhoods. I believe that our public service should have the tools, and public safety should have the tools and resources that they need. The other thing is the infrastructure. Infrastructure is key. If the infrastructure cannot hold the residents and the businesses coming in, we'll be losing on that end. And I think the third piece is the community service piece. I think that it takes all of us working together, the business community, the organizations, our government, everybody working together to make us successful. So, if you honor me with your vote on April 7th, I will honor you with my service. My work has just begun. Eight months in, I've got my feet grounded, and I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and go to work. So thank you so much. I'm getting my sign. I thank you for your vote.
Thank you, Betty. Thank you, James, Angel, and Betty. National here for our District 5 candidate, Terry Morrison. I believe that Leonard Thompson could join us today.
Good afternoon. I jumped up to the mayor's and Bob would stop me, said, "Anytime you talk." I had to run to Minus Room. I wasn't that anxious to get up there. Again, good afternoon, everyone. Thank the Chamber for this opportunity. I guess being a District 5 councilperson now, I can wish you all well for being here, invite you to District 5. We're here in District 5 now in beautiful matching Victoria Ballroom, the Pritz family in suit, they do a wonderful job. So again, as being a District 5 councilperson, I'd like to welcome you here in District 5. My name is Terry Morrison. Live here in District 5, actually blocked away down Riches Street, actually walked down here today. Been here for 25 years. Moved here in 1989, 1990. Actually moved here, purchased the funeral home in 89. Been a resident since then, came here to purchase the business, decided to become a councilperson four years ago. Looked for a secret reelection here at District 5 for the councilperson. Again, lived here in the district all 25 years that I've been here, so I saw a lot of changes in the early 90s with the crime situation. And what I'd like to see in the next four years is pretty much the same. I believe the city has moved forward in the last four years, and I believe the Chamber is a very intricate part of what's moving forward. Again, love to work with the Chamber, been a member of the Chamber, my business on and off for the years that I've been here, even the time that Russ came and addressed the council. I take that very seriously. I believe, you know, the business community has a very important part, and we need to listen to your concerns. And that was one of the things that I ran on four years ago, being the boards and listening. And I know I've been accused of not saying much, at least on TV on the council. And I think you need to be a good listener, and that's what I've done in the last four years for our constituents in District 5, is listen to their concerns. And it's going to take the whole community, the business community, the private residents, the gold workers, Larry and Richard, the laborers, to listen to everyone's concern and bring all that together. But one thing that I definitely would like what she done once I'm re-elected is we're going to change the numbers of the district. I'm always going to like, so, that's going to be one of the first things that I'd like what she does. Seriously, I got my sign. Again, and I never looked at the person giving the sign. That's bad. I've learned how to do that. I'm sorry. Again, thank you all for coming, and looking to work with you all in the next four years and the time to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Next one, five of our overall candidates to the stage, Tom Taranti, Robert Oderkirk, and Andrew Melch.
Good morning, good afternoon. I want to thank the Chamber for allowing us to show up, take the time out of your busy day. As Councilman Grohl mentioned earlier, four years ago when I was elected and he was elected, the city of Joliet was in bad shape, very bad shape. But we are better off today than we were four years ago. In 2011, then-city manager Tom Thanis came to the City Council and said, "Unless we find a new revenue source, we may have to lay off police officers, firefighters, and possibly close fire stations." I sat down, proposed the budget, that included small sales tax increase and telecommunication tax, knowing, knowing that it would be an issue in this election. But it was the right thing to do. Rather than kick the can down the road, address the problem, and we did. As a result, today, we have a $35 million to $40 million reserve fund, and we've had a balanced budget for the last four years. I work hard to bring businesses here. Over the last four years, as Councilman Grohl said, we've issued 21,000 building permits. This brought in a half a billion dollars in permit fees, $11 million in tap-on fees, sewer and water tap-on fees. I work hard to bring businesses here. When I've passed the budget, I asked everybody to take in. I cut the subsidy to the Rialto, to the historical museum, to BiPARK. I've asked, I've asked the employees to pitch in, they did. And I asked the residents to pitch in with the sales taxes. As a result of the last four years, we, as I said, we do have a balanced budget. Prior to the last four years, the city of Joliet had 829 building permits. That's it. Compared to 21,000 in the money we brought in. If it weren't for that budget, right now, our budget would be 800, 800-some thousand dollars short. We'd have a whole other budget. Because of that budget, we were able to hire more police officers, were able to address the Emerald Ash Forest tree problem. We've got a five-year plan to replace all the trees. Mike Holley continually states that he did not vote for the increase in the taxes. The fact of the matter is, the increase in the taxes was in the 2013, 14, and 15 budget, which passed 9 to 0. So he did, in fact, vote for the increase in taxes. Let me get to that again. To say Joliet cannot be great again is, I feel, is an insult to the residents of the city of Joliet. A lot of people work hard in this city to make this city great and to keep it great. And I think it's an insult to say we can't keep Joliet moving forward and keep Joliet great as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. National here from Robert Oderkirk.
Thank you, Chamber of Congress, for putting on this event. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Like Mr. Foster, I also am a member of the Chamber of Congress. Real brief background, background of myself. I first came to Joliet in 1993. I was hired as a Joliet police officer. I spent 10 years in the Joliet Police Department. I worked primarily, and he set Joliet up in the Forest Park community area with Ms. Louise Rain. I was a four-time nominee for Officer of the Year for the 10 years I spent here in the police department. In 1995, I won the Martin Bear and Labor Award with Officer Patrick Carver in my department. In 1999, I made the decision to go back to school. I applied for, was accepted to John Marshall Law School. I completed law school in four years while working four times, a full-time down here in Joliet. I was on the Dean's List. Every semester, I graduated without us. In the year 2003, after graduating law school, I made the decision to leave the city of Joliet. I went, became an attorney, went to practice for the city of Chicago as a prosecutor. In 2006, I made the decision to leave Chicago, to come back to Joliet in private practice and re-establish myself in Joliet. In 2008, I was recruited by our State Department. I went overseas to Iraq for 20 months, working with our armed forces, with the Iraqi military, with the Iraqi police and security forces, to try to train these individuals to prepare for the eventual day, what's occurring today, that the US is no longer going to be, and the Iraqis are going to stand up for themselves. All overseas, I was promoted to regional commander. I had 270 people under my command. I was a chartered in Mosul with the Creek regions of Iraq. If you're familiar with today's Louis, it's the northern part of Iraq. I was in Kurdistan with the Peshmerga, and I'm proud to say that the Iraqis that I partnered with, and that our military partnered with, are the same Iraqis that today are standing up and fighting ISIS. 2010, I returned to Joliet, came back into private practice, became a partner at the law firm across from Al-Azam Oderkirk. Currently, it's my own law firm, the office of Bob Oderkirk. I employ nine people. I have an office in downtown Joliet, right here in Joliet. I was elected to the council in 2011. I ran against a 16-year incumbent. And the reason why I was elected was that people in Joliet knew it's something that was wrong. Let's throw a number at the business people in the audience today. Since the riverboats had come into Joliet in the early 1990s, Joliet has collected over $700 million in revenue from the two riverboats alone. Outside of all other sources of taxing in Joliet, $700 million from two riverboats pumping money into our local economy. But unlike what the mayor just told you, we are not needing budget. I spoke with Jim Geddon yesterday, the city chief financial officer. We, last year, were $3 million over budget. We had to reach in the reserve. The budget that was proposed by the mayor in 2015 called for $8 million to come on reserve to balance the budget. After $700 million, we should be able to pay our bills. The problem in Joliet is not lack of tax revenue. The problem in Joliet is a culture of city hall. Quickly, three things that need to change. Number one, you need a mayor that can market himself and the city aggressively. Number two, you need an economic development director, which the city's never had. And number three, Joliet needs, for the first time in its history, an economic development plan to lead it forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. All here for the candy to help us, Jamie.
Special thank you to the Chamber and everyone for attending today. Joliet is at a turning point. We grew too fast in the decline in economy. We are now stuck with big city problems, both social and economic. These issues need to be dealt with from a bold new frame of reference. To demonstrate that I am the right person for mayor, I developed 101 ideas for a new Joliet, should have also received the county. These ideas are not just traditional solutions for traditional problems. They are a creative roadmap on how we can realize all our aspirations for Joliet. I have a totally different, bold new approach and vision for Joliet that clearly separates me from my opponents. My primary goals for Joliet are good jobs and safe neighborhoods. I support increasing of property and sales tax rates. A few examples of my 101 ideas are, the city of Joliet needs to take legal possession of immigrant terrorists. All council members should be expressing their issues now to have them addressed in the plan being developed. We need possession issues resolved, not debated. Let's restart efforts on the Brits Creek Town Center, a lifestyle mall, and the legal and amusement market at I-55 and I-80. Focus our energies on increasing the system of operation of properties to grow sales, not tax rates. Sell silver Ross Field or convert it to a multi-use two-sport facility. Kickstart downtown residential housing with a tax abatement incentive. A business retention plan is needed for our major employers, starting with Cannon Hill and St. Joseph's Medical Center. Develop an incentive program for Joliet's small businesses, decorate full-time jobs for Joliet citizens. Create an side improvement program for businesses on Jefferson Street and Collins Street. Create a new mayor's advisory committee on small business. Reduce healthcare costs and overtime budgets to cover additional neighborhood and community police officers. Transform the riverfront along the Displanes River into the showcase of Joliet. Change the Rialto and the museum's non-accountable subsidies to accountable incentive payments. Investigate the possibilities high-speed internet access presents for job creation. Sell advertising opportunities to local businesses and city media publication and facilities. Contract with grant writers on a performance basis to secure funding that supports the city. Develop strategies now to keep gaming revenue at quarter levels amid expectation of more riverboat gaming. The city needs to be inclusive and step outside its comfort zone of municipal governance, and engage school boards, community-based organizations, religious groups, and serve citizens in other non-traditional programs. If you review my entire list of 101 ideas, you'll see for yourself how I differ. Currently, I'm chairman of the Board of Joliet Junior College. I was also a 30-year administrator of TJC retiring as a vice president. I'm Andy Melch, I'm asking for your vote for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom, Bob, and Andy, and thank you all, candidates. Also, thank all of you for attending today.